Alrighty, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, May 2nd, approximately 6:30 PM. If everybody will please rise. We have PAC 787 with us. Cub Scouts, boys, why don't you come on up? And if you can do us the honor and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Right up in front of the podium there?
Weeble ones?
No, Cub Scouts. I asked them.
They are Cub Scouts, but they're weeble ones right now. Almost weeble suits.
There you go.
The place is waiting.
There you go. Alright. It's all in the scarf. Guys, I'll give it to you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the new public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Why don't you give us your name real quick? And we know that you're PAC 787.
I'm Ryan Algeri. I'm here because of my dad, who is firefighter of the year.
No way. Alrighty.
Of the city of Oviedo.
Great.
Hi, I'm Justin Jordan.
Hi, I'm Hunter Krantz.
Alrighty, guys. Thank you very much. Give them a round of applause, guys. They did a good job. Chief White?
Normally, this would work for me. Just a quick reminder to mark your calendars for Memorial Day ceremony. It'll commence at 9 o'clock. We want you all to get there about 8:30 if you can. We'll have some special parking places for you.
Thank you, Chief.
If you'd like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Heavenly Father, thank you again for the protections that you afford on this community and our nation. Lord, we pray for all our elected officials, local, county, state, and national level. Father God, we pray for our veterans as we look towards Memorial Day just around our corner. We're so blessed to have so many in this community and their families. And we just ask that you bless them, grant them good health. Lord, we pray for our award recipients tonight and their families. We thank you for their service that they provide this community and continue to bless them, that they may prosper and do well in their job. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. This time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have all members of council present this evening. We have a couple of matters of ceremonial items to start off with. And the first is the recognition of the firefighter and police officer of the year. Are we going to do them in order, I'm assuming? We'll start with firefighter, then we'll go to police officer. So Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and those in the audience tonight. We're honored tonight to award our 2016 firefighter of the year. He is recently recognized by the Oviedo American Allegiant Post for the same. And I'd like to ask Tom Algeri and his family to please come join me. And after I give just the brief announcement?
We know there's a Cub Scout joining them, so...
Then we'll ask you, council, to come down and also assist us with a presentation. Tom's Battalion Chief is here as well. He's well represented, as you can see. Tom has just excelled this year. I'm so thrilled that his peers nominated him for the firefighter of the year. Let me share with you just a few brief things of what he has accomplished. Very outstanding attributes. He was nominated by his lieutenant officers as this year's firefighter of the year among several candidates. He performs as a write-up lieutenant officer from time to time. He's an instructor. He teaches ACLS, PHTLS, PALS, and CPR. And if that's not enough, he's involved in the Cancer Society, the Pink Hills of central Florida, fundraising and other efforts to support those endeavors of those in suffering. He's participated in the Veteran Honor flights to DC. And in fact, on one flight, had to help with an in-flight emergency of one of our veterans that needed medical care as well. He's attended programs at the National Fire Academy in Maryland. And if that's not enough, just about two weeks ago, on his way home from duty from Oviedo, he noticed a cardiac emergency in the middle of the roadway in front of Antioch Baptist Church, stopped, rendered aid, along with an off-duty Seminole County firefighter, which we're happy to say was a save. So it's our honor to recognize him tonight. If you would come down and help me present him.
We have a couple little things for you, Tom. The first one is this right here. It's the Oviedo Fire Rescue 2016 firefighter of the year. It's hereby presented to Thomas Algeri for exceptional performance and contribution in honorable service to the City of Oviedo Fire Rescue Department on the second day of May 2016. And it's signed by your chief, Chief White. Congratulations, and thank you very much for the citizens of Oviedo. Chief also has this impressive piece of hardware for you. Has your name on it. Says "Oviedo Fire Rescue Firefighter of the Year 2016. Service with honor, service with respect, and service with excellence." And you certainly do that for all of us. Thank you again. What do you think of that?
Yeah? Why don't you guys get up here in the center? Right next to Chief.
Thomas, thank you so much.
Oh, look at that.
Now, wait. Are we gonna... Is he gonna get pinned, and there'll be blood? That only happens to the new ones, right? Congratulations, my friend. Congratulations. Chief, anything else for us?
We'll get Chief truck down next. Chief?
I'd like Detective Mattingly and his wife, Sarah, come on up. Daniel was selected our 2015 Officer of the Year for a number of reasons. He's a member of our Criminal Investigations Division. A lot of times, they're kind of the forgotten entity. They're not the first first responders, however. Just a couple of things Daniel did this year. There were a couple of burglaries in a specific area. We went and investigated. Daniel went out and investigated, and through his diligence, he found all the stolen material hidden in the woods. He kind of laid back and waited and watched, and sure enough, here comes the guy that committed the burglaries, back to collect everything. Not only did we arrest him, collect all the evidence, he also admitted some other burglaries that he had happened. That was... Is one of the things Daniel did this year. Probably his biggest investigation was a runaway... She was 11, correct? She was 11. She ran away with her 22-year-old boyfriend, using all available resources to his disposal. We were able to track the girl and the runaway up to North Carolina, where they were taken into custody. Daniel went up there. He interviewed him, got him to admit. He confessed not only removing the girl, but having some sexual relations with her. He's back now, and he's in jail. Then, he and Sergeant Sefrin had to drive back with the crying 11-year-old all the way back from North Carolina. I think that was probably the longest part of the trip. So Daniel, for everything you did last year, and you continue to do this year, we recognize you as the Officer of the Year for 2015.
Just thank you so much for all your service to our community. You know the citizens of Oviedo appreciate everything that not only you do, but everybody at the Police Department does for us. So thank you so much. And you, thank you for allowing him to do that. We know how hard it is on the wives at home. So, guys, excellent job, Daniel. Why don't you come on up front here? We'll get... Congratulations.
We have one more item. Proclamation for the police departments. Police Week proclamation. Let me read this one. This is a proclamation from the City of Oviedo. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of the Oviedo Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Oviedo. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of law enforcement, and that members of the Oviedo Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Oviedo Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I Dominic Percampiere, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Oviedo, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 15th through May 20th, 2016, as National Police Week in the City of Oviedo, and urge the citizens of Oviedo to join us in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And further call upon all citizens of Oviedo to observe May 15th, 2016, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community and have become disabled in the performance of their duty, and recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness here whereof, I hereunto set my hand on this proclamation. We'll pass it over to Barbara, and I'm assuming this will go to the Police Chief? Alrighty. And that is the proclamation that we have. Any other comments from council? No? Okay. Moving along, that is the end of our ceremonial items. Our first action item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for April 18th, 2016. It was a regular session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
Mr. Mayor? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Nope. Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to the public comment portion of our meeting. This is the time for anybody in the audience who would like to address council on an item on the agenda or not. I have no written request. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to do so? Please come on up. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Tommy Minton, 344 Timberwood Trail. I just wanted to make a comment about the discussion item regarding Lake Pickin' North and South Projects in Orange County. Before, I had the privilege and the ability to, last year, to come back into the city limits. I lived in Ashington Park, which is right there near the intersection of Tanner and McCulloch, for the better part of, I think, about six years. So I was, for a while, one of those cross-through traffic that we've all discussed a lot, for a while, working at SSC Oviedo, but then transferring over to Sanford Campus. And so I definitely lived that traffic nightmare for a long time. I can say from my experience that the bottleneck in McCulloch and Tanner won't get any better unless it's widened. But widening is only going to solve the current problem, not the existing, if this is approved. If Orange County does go through with allowing the development, widening's not going to solve the issue. Putting a bridge over the econ's not going to solve the issue. Because the issue exists from McCulloch backwards. Everything coming from UCF and Research Park, I passed and drove with those people every day, passing through there. It is a mess. So I don't know what exactly the discussion is going to be about as far as the council's concerned. But if it does have anything to do with support or non-support of the projects, I would definitely put in favor of not support. Because I don't believe that area can really sustain that type of growth that fast. And again, speaking from somebody who went through it, it was a mess now. It could only get exponentially worse if that is approved. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address council at this Hearing none, we'll close public comments and move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening is items 5 through 14. What is the pleasure of council?
May I motion to adopt consent agenda?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Councilman...
I'm good, sir.
Councilman Hicken?
Looks good.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Councilwoman Drago? Nope. Alrighty. Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to our first and only public hearing this evening. It's item number 15, ordinance number 1636. And just bear with me a moment while I catch up here. And Mr. Groot, would you do us the honor of reading ordinance 1636 by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending the official zoning map to change the zoning district of approximately 10.97 acres located on the north side of Mitchell Hammock Road and 344 feet east of West Broadway Street from agriculture to commercial, C2, being described in this ordinance, providing for conflict, severability, codification, as well as the correction of scrutiny errors and ineffective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The existing agricultural zoning district is inconsistent with the property's existing commercial future land use designation. Therefore, the purpose of this zoning map amendment is to assign a zoning district that is consistent with the property's future land use designation. The proposed C2 zoning district is consistent with the existing future land use designation. It is also compatible with the surrounding zoning districts and existing uses. The Land Planning Agency conducted a public hearing on ordinance 1636 on March 29th, 2016, and thereafter recommended adoption. It is recommended that the City Council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1636.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant present? Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Hank Porche. My business address is 1697 Pratt Place, Oviedo, Florida.
Do you agree with staff?
Yeah, Mr. Cobb and Mr. Groot hit it right on the head. It's fairly straightforward. It's a rezoning to comply with the future land use plan of the City of Oviedo.
Great. What do you have plans for it? I've seen many drawings floating around out there.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff floating around. Nothing's done yet.
Nothing to talk about.
Alright.
Alrighty. Any questions for the applicant from council?
No, sir.
Okay. Great. Thank you. As we mentioned earlier, and Mr. Cobb mentioned, this is a public hearing. I have no written requests. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council on ordinance number Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 1636.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilwoman, you have the floor?
No.
You're good. Deputy Mayor?
It's good.
Councilman Britton?
I'm good.
Councilman Hicken?
Good.
Alrighty. Hearing no discussion, I will call the vote. The motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1636. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to item number 16 on our agenda. That is ordinance number 1637. This is a statutory development agreement and associated signage master plan for Oviedo on the Park. Mr. Groot, would you do us the honor of reading ordinance number 1637 in its entirety? Only teasing. By title only's fine. Was it a long one, at least?
That was... That would be disturbing.
The title's a long one.
Oh, the title itself. Alrighty, we'll stick with the title, then.
Okay. An ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, enacting a statutory development agreement relating to property owned by Park Place Apartments of Oviedo LLC, formerly known as PAC Oviedo LLC, PAC, as the owner of property that is known as the Oviedo on the Park Development, as more specifically described in the development agreement approved by this ordinance, providing for approval of a creative sign plan, providing for dedication of property to the City of Oviedo as sign easements, providing for the development agreement to be approved in accordance with the provisions of the Florida Local Government Development Agreement Act as set forth at sections 163.3220 to 163.3243 Florida statutes, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for non-codification and implementation, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. That's as long as I can make it, Mr. Mayor.
It wasn't that bad, actually. Thank you. Mr. Cobb, can you enlighten us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the City Council to adopt a statutory development agreement and associated master sign plan for Oviedo on the Park. This agreement and plan affects the property that is generally located on the north side of Mitchell Hammock Road, the west side of Oviedo Boulevard, the south side of Center Lake Lane, and the east side of City Plaza. However, it does not include the properties that are currently being developed for the Starbucks and the Chipotle retail building. The Land Development Code has some interesting sign regulations within Article 6, which governs the Oviedo on the Park property. But the one thing that the Land Development Code does, it allows the applicant or property owner to propose what it calls an area-wide sign plan, a master plan for the signage. And the purpose of the master plan, which is Exhibit B of your development agreement, is to provide for a style, a copy, a design, size, material, location, consistency throughout the project. And so that's what the... One of the purposes of this agreement was to do that, was to create that look. If you will note that we've brought to you some deviations in the past with the Townhome Project and with the David Wycliffe Homes Project. They wanted to use the same type of signage that we were using in Oviedo on the Park. And so we had to do deviations because the current Land Development Code didn't address that. So this master plan and development agreement addresses that type of signage, to create the look, so to speak, for Oviedo on the Park. This master sign plan and development agreement, it addresses the permanent ground-mounted signage for Oviedo on the Park. One of the things that we needed to do was to address an issue that came up with some of the retail and commercial, other commercial businesses in the area. There was an expressed need to have signage on Mitchell Hammock Road. Well, with the subdivision of the property and the development of the extension of Microburto Way, and then also the development of City Walk Lane through the middle of the property, it created the... It made it such that the properties that front on Center Lake Lane and City Plaza north of Microburto don't have frontage on Mitchell Hammock Road. The Land Development Code would treat people like that, to say that they cannot have signage on Mitchell Hammock Road because it would be considered off-site. So that was one of the things that we needed to address. We needed to address the signage as a whole for the entire area. Mr. Groot recommended that we look at implementing a statutory development agreement. One of the things with the statutory development agreement is that you have to have a public benefit. There has to be a stated public benefit. If you remember back when we presented the signage, the special signage for the mall that's located out on Red Bug Lake Road, we did it through a statutory development agreement. And there was a dedicated public benefit. So one of the things that this agreement does, it's an extension of our public-private partnership with PAC, is that it not only addresses permanent signage and temporary signage for the private development, but it also addresses permanent signage and temporary signage for the city's park as well. So it brings into all those things, and it creates that consistency of look and style and color and form. The staff has reviewed the ordinance, and they recommend adoption. The land planning agency, local planning agency, conducted a public hearing on Tuesday, April 26th, and they recommended adoption. It's recommended that City Council schedule a public hearing for May 16th, 2016, for in consideration of this ordinance.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on May 16th, 2016, for ordinance number 1637 here at Oviedo City Hall, Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM.
Second.
Motion second. Deputy Mayor, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Councilwoman?
No.
Councilman Britton?
I just got one question. This may be off the topic, but we discussed all these in the workshops, I don't know how long ago it was, last winter maybe. And the question I have is regarding signage on Mitchell Hammock Road. It's the folding directional signs, is that correct? Does my memory serve me right? What kind of signage are we going to have on Mitchell Hammock Road at Oviedo on the Park?
Okay. We're going to have a variety of signage, both permanent as well as temporary. You're also going to have a variety of signage, both private and public, as well. If you look at your plan, there's actually a graphic in your plan that shows you the Mitchell Hammock Road experience.
In the package?
Yes, sir. It's... I want to say that it's page five of your master plan, if I remember correctly. If you start... Get through here.
It's in the ordinance, I think.
Yes, sir. Soon as my iPad pops up here, I'll be able to take it.
Let's see. Yeah, it's all the way at the back of this thing.
Oh, here we go.
Page 313 to 358.
Yeah, it's way back.
Okay, I'm looking at the A-frame signs, is what I was thinking at the time.
Okay, A-frames... The A-frame signs, the what we call the sandwich board signs. They're small signs that are both eligible to the city as well as eligible to the private property owners, too. They are limited in scope. The A-frame signs are limited in location in that you're only allowed to have a business... Let's take a business, for instance. They would only be allowed to have their sandwich board sign within the frontage of their establishment. If they're located on a corner, then obviously they can have one sign on each frontage. These signs are only about three feet tall. They have to be able to be brought in at night. They can come out when they open a business. They go back inside with the close of business. But they are limited in... As far as location, they can only... I don't think they can be more than two feet off the wall of the business. It puts it into the public right-of-way. That's one of the things that the agreement does make accommodations for, those types of signs, to allow them in the public right-of-way in front of the establishment. But you won't... I don't believe that you will see any of those signs on Mitchell Hammock Road. They're going to be more confined.
I'm looking at the multi-tenant signs. Is that what we would see typically on Mitchell Hammock?
Yes. Those are the types of permanent signs. There is a multi-tenant sign located just east of City Plaza Way. And there's also... There's a multi-tenant sign on each side of City Walk Lane, and then there's a multi-tenant sign located just west of Oviedo Boulevard.
Okay. And those areas are typical to what other properties on Mitchell Hammock would be allowed to use?
No, sir.
Are they bigger?
They are special to Oviedo on the Park. They're bigger.
They're bigger?
Yes, sir.
How much? That's kind of what I'm getting at, is how we reconcile allowing these types of signs at Oviedo on the Park. And I'm really focused on Mitchell Hammock at Oviedo on the Park, and I'm really focused on Mitchell Hammock right now, where if you go up or down the road, we don't allow that type of sign or that size of sign.
Well, I can say this, they're not much bigger.
It doesn't look like it, that's why I'm...
They're not much bigger. The multi-, if you could, if you're looking at the, if you're looking at the multi-tenant sign that's labeled C1 there on page five, that sign is about, I would put it on par with a shopping center sign, is whatever we'd put it on par with. The multi-tenant sign B, which is C2, that's a little bit bigger than what you would find for an individual business, is what you would find. The biggest difference between these signs and what you're going to find elsewhere on Mitchell Hammock Road is that these signs are going to allow businesses that are located on properties that don't have frontage on Mitchell Hammock Road to be on those signs. That's the biggest difference you're going to find, and that's what the statutory development agreement, that's the vehicle that allows us to do that. Land Planning Agency actually asked a question like that when we were, when we met with them about, you know, why aren't we doing this for other? They wanted to bring a more global prospect to, scope to it. And the one thing that I remind them of is that in Oviedo on the Park, and particularly the New Downtown Village Core District as well as New Downtown District, we have set things up that are different from the rest of the city. The example I use, if this is the one area where you can have a freestanding bar, which you can't have elsewhere in the city. So we've traditionally treated this area differently. It has higher densities, it has less setbacks on it, it has the public-private partnership within it. So there's a lot of things that we've done to set this place different than what we would see elsewhere within the city. This sign package is consistent with what we've been doing throughout the process.
Yeah, and we've talked about this a lot. I just wanted to kind of clarify that this is a special place, but it's not, it's not going to be outrageously different than what the rest of the tenants on Mitchell Hammock have, so I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. That's it. Thanks.
Counselor Harkin?
No.
Great. Mr. Cobb, let's extrapolate just a little bit. How many square feet of retail is going to be in there? Hundred thousand, eighty thousand?
It can be, well, it's a minimum of eighty-five, but I think we can get upwards to one hundred and twenty-five.
So if we work off of eighty-five thousand square foot of retail upwards of, now, if you had a shopping plaza like Publix over here, what size sign could you have? How many square feet?
The Publix over there has a ninety-six square foot sign.
Alright, these are only sixty-three square feet.
Correct.
So, they're smaller. The average square footage of a parcel that has a sign, has frontage, is now forty square feet, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so, the signs really aren't that much bigger.
Not much bigger.
Not, not when you compare it to the size of the plaza, the size of the square, the square footage of the retail and the need for, and actually, the design element of these signs have been put together by the developer and our staff, so these are one of the few signs, we're actually involved in the design of the signs, so there's consistency throughout the entire project, correct?
That's correct.
Alrighty. The sandwich boards, those are a great thing that Counselor Britton brought up. Now, the reason why the sandwich boards, from what I'm reading, are allowed in a right-of-way is that these buildings are on the edge of the right-of-way. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right, so if we didn't allow them to put their sandwich board on the sidewalk, the wider sidewalks, then they would have no place to put them. But are the rules for their placement the same as everybody else's?
Uh, yes. Well, they're, the only place that we...
I meant that they can only be two feet off the building.
Right.
They can only be so high.
Yes.
Right. Except now, they have to be a specific design.
Correct. They are consistent with what's in Article 6 right now.
Okay. Attention-getting devices. I was looking through here, and it seems to be the exact same thing. The business can apply for the permit, have the attention-getting device for X number of days. The only difference is, once again, because the businesses are on the right-of-way with no other place to put an attention-getting device, is that we would allow them to put them on the sidewalk, as opposed to most businesses would want to put them out at the edge of the parking lot, so that they're visible from the road. These businesses don't have that capability, correct?
That's correct.
But these businesses aren't going to be able to go put the attention-getting device out on Mitchell Hammock Road, it's got to be out in the front of their business, according to what I see here.
That's correct.
So, alright. So, it's, it's very, very fair to say that the actual sign code that has been crafted here for Oviedo on the Park is extremely similar to the sign code throughout the entire city, with modifications made to accommodate the uniqueness of the placements of the buildings at Oviedo on the Park as compared to the placement of most retail buildings throughout I'll rephrase if you need me to.
The sign regulations for Oviedo on the Park reflect the type of development that it was planned for Oviedo on the Park.
Okay.
Okay. This agreement and plan implement that, but it also addresses some of the issues that we've encountered, lessons learned that we've encountered as we've developed Oviedo on the Park.
Well, I think, now, Mr. Cobb, I'm going to, I'm going to change direction on you a little bit. I think that more applies to temporary signs. I'm talking permanent signs. When I look through this, and I look through the sandwich boards, the attention-getting devices, I see nothing different between this area and what the rest of the businesses in the city can do, other than the businesses at Oviedo on the Park have to be able to use the sidewalk because of the placement of the buildings. Is that a correct statement?
Almost, almost, not, not...
Tell me why it's incorrect, Mr. Cobb. We just discussed this, you and I.
They're only allowed to have, this area's only allowed to have one type of...
Oh, alright.
Attention-getting device.
Okay, you're, the literal planet in you is coming out.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Alright, I, I'm talking globally, I'm talking the...
Globally, yes.
Okay, yes, alrighty. I am talking, how about this? The spirit of the code for attention-getting devices for the businesses at Oviedo on the Park is the same for the spirit of the code for the other businesses in our city.
With the, with minor modifications, yes.
Right, with modifications that we are actually telling them what type of attention-getting devices they could use. We are giving them design elements for their attention-getting devices, so you could actually say they're almost more restricted.
I would say that, yes.
Than what a regular business can do, because a regular business can go out and get a ten-foot balloon with a gorilla on top and get a permit for it, where these would not be able to do that.
That's correct. Anything other than what's in the plan will require the approval of city council.
Correct, because when you go through the plan, you actually see the exact type of flag and banner they can use, you see the exact type of sandwich board you can use. We have the directional signs, right? We're going to, there's, I saw the, I saw those in the plan. They are pole-mounted, they're at, they're in scale for walking height, right? Seven feet up.
They're seven feet clear.
They're going to be actually little directional signs like you see in Winter Park, pointing the direction of where each little business may be, and they will also have a public purpose, because we're going to use them too.
They are. Then, one of the things we did with them is that they're strategically located. Each post is basically to tell you what's around it. And so if there's, the posts that are provided near the park are going to have signs that address the park. Posts that are internal to the, let's say a post at the corner of City Plaza and Microburto, they're going to tell you what's around that post, is what they're going to do.
Right, okay. And again, though, we're restricting what they're going to look like and where they're going to be.
Correct.
Okay. The amphitheater is also, and cultural center is going to have some signage to use, right? To advertise events.
Both permanent and temporary.
Okay. Alrighty, so that's really what I was trying to get at, Mr. Cobb, that the, the package is unique to Oviedo on the Park, because Oviedo on the Park is unique to development in the city.
Yes, sir.
But the spirit of the sign code is the same spirit that we have for all of the businesses in the city of Oviedo, in terms of their ability to do attention-getting devices, to do special sales, to put out their A-frame boards. And as you pointed out, it's actually a little more restricted in there, because there's only certain types of attention-getting devices they could use, where a regular business can pick just about anything, well, not anything, but close to anything that they want to put out.
And they would not require city council approval.
Right. This does.
Anything except for the freestanding banner, yes? Or the vertically constructed banner.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it that it took us a while to get, to get there, but maybe it was the way I was trying to explain it. One issue I do have, and we'll talk about it more next week, next week though, is the coming-soon construction, six of those out along Mitchell Hammock as temporary signs. I still have a little bit of an issue with that, but we'll bring that up next week. Counselor Harkin?
And I know, Tom, you're back there, and I probably won't get an answer on this, but everybody asks who saw this agenda packet, you know, these logos of these particular restaurants, are they wishful thinking you just filled, or is that a possibility? You could just give me a yes or no. You don't have to get crazy.
A little of everything.
Alright, good.
They started a year ago, and we just left them there. They're not indicative of who is there or who might become.
Alright, but you're working on it. Alright, that's good.
Yeah.
Alright, good. That'd be good. Because people have seen that, so go get them.
Anything else? Up and down the council one more time? Nope? Alrighty, so the motion on table is to schedule a public hearing for May 16th, 2016, 6:30 PM here in council chambers. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Moving along, we're on to our discussion items, item number 18, Lake Picket North and South Projects. Mr. Cobb, why don't I turn it over to you?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for city council to discuss and provide direction regarding the city's position as it relates to the Lake Picket North and South Projects that are currently being considered by the Orange County Board of County Commissioners. There are actually four applications before the commissioners. There are some comprehensive plan amendments, context amendments, as well as a map, what they call Map 22, which establishes the Lake Picket study area. There's a large-scale map amendment that is for what they call the Grove, which is also known as Lake Picket South. There is a rezoning for the Grove, Lake Picket South, that also includes what they call a regulatory plan. And then there's a future land use map amendment for the Sestini, which is also known as Lake Picket North. The comprehensive plan amendments and the future land use map amendment and the zoning map amendment for the Grove are all in the adoption stage. The Orange County Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on April 21st, and they recommended adoption of all three of those. The Orange County Commission is going to consider those applications on June 14th. The Lake Picket North project, as I said, is in the transmittal stage. In other words, they're going to have a public hearing to decide whether or not to send it up to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. The Orange County Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended, they recommended that the comprehensive plan amendment from rural to this new future land use designation of Lake Picket be transmitted to the FDEO. The Board of County Commissioners will consider that transmittal at, also, on June the 14th. As you discussed in April, the Seminole County Board of County Commissioners has submitted a letter to Orange County expressing their position on it, and they also expressed, they expressed an objection to the Lake Picket North project, and there were basically three issues, that there was the effect on the east rural area of Seminole County, there were transportation capacity issues, and then there's also degradation of surface water. The staff has provided you with a very detailed memorandum, and giving you as much information that we could give you on these projects, and how we feel that they could possibly impact Oviedo. The staff has also provided you with a draft letter, and if you're comfortable with the letter, that's fine. Our goal is to have a final letter for you by the end of the meeting. We have staff viewing the meeting. If you like the letter as is, just let us know. If you feel that you would like to add to or take away from the letter, that's fine as well. We're seeking your direction tonight on what you would like to do with this letter. And, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to the council so that you can have discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Anybody want to start? The only direction we have to give Mr. Cobb is, do we like the letter he wrote or not?
I'll start.
Okay.
I think the letter was very well drafted, and I support it. I support the fact that we will support the Seminole County Commission, and I'm, I'm okay with this.
Great. Counselor Harkin?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree, but, you know, I mean, you know, when we first, first came up here, all of us years ago, and we used to have some power to, to stop some of these things, my, you know, I wonder if Orange County is, is not in the same boat that, that we find ourselves in sometimes, where maybe they, they want to deny and they, they can't. But however the case, I think Mr. Minton brought up a great point when he was at the podium. I mean, they could build all this stuff, and that'll accommodate what's there right now, build 4,000 more homes, and it just gets worse. I mean, this is really bad, and, you know, the letter is fine, I think it accomplishes the goal. I think it wouldn't be a bad idea if one of our staff members was at the meeting to read it into the record as well, so it doesn't get lost. But I would agree. I mean, it would be really good if they would find a better way. I mean, this is just going to really decimate a lot of, a lot of quality of life issues. So I would agree with our, our Seminole County Board, and the letter you wrote is fine, Brian.
Anyone else? Counselor Britton?
Well, I'm not an English major, so I'm not going to attempt to do this, but I, the flavor of the letter to me isn't strong enough. You know, just referring to Seminole County, we agree with, with them disagreeing, or doesn't really say what we want to say. We want to say we're against this, we're against the bridge, because we believe it's not going to have any corrective impact on us, it's going to have negative impacts on us. I don't know how to say that, but I don't read that when I read the first paragraph here. It just refers to Seminole County's letter, and that we're in agreement with it. And I, I understand we can go back and do that, but it doesn't say what we really are thinking here. Maybe a good attorney like Lonnie could take a look at it.
Well, what is it that you'd like to add?
I, just the flavor of it to me is not strong enough.
Okay.
I, I would...
I don't have any specific suggestion, because I'm not any better at this than, than anyone else, so I'd like them to look at it and say, wow, these guys are really upset about this.
Okay.
Want to try it?
I, I know, I would agree on a specific...
I think, I think Counselor Schenk's writing things down, but when you're done...
I, I agree, and...
Yeah, he's good at this.
Take care...
Hang on, just a second. Are you done, Keith?
Huh?
Are you good for now? Okay, great.
Now, we take care, you know, that, some wording that says that they need to take care of the current problem as it exists, so, you know, that, that...
It already is a problem. We're already seeing traffic problems that exist.
Something like, are you kidding us? Look at, look at it right now, and look what you're going to do.
There's already a traffic problem that exists that starts this whole conversation, that, you know, they should look to have a collaborative effort of Seminole County, UCF, Oviedo, all interested parties, sit down, like years ago, that they had, how shall we grow, and look to, how shall this east side develop or not develop? Some wording that states, we need to get together and start planning this as what's going on. And again, forcefully say, we're against any additional homes or residential or non-residential at this point, until these two can be, in a disgust, and put, put forth. That there's, nothing can be built until that happens. I think it's, you have to say, we have to take care of the, there is a problem that's currently existing, because we don't say that at all. We don't reference that there's a current problem. Forget even adding, we can't add anything. They have to take care of their current problem. I, I think Brian said, one of you mentioned the word mitigate, there's mitigation that needs to be done right now to take care of the problem, and that, you know, we need to do it collaboratively and get together, all of us, in a real manner, plan that east side and say, because it affects all of us. We're all sitting on the edge, Seminole County us, Orange County, we're sitting together in this edge, and UCF, and whatever happens to any one of us and Seminole State, whatever happens to all of us concerns every one of us. So, that would be it, is those kind of three things. Take care of what's going on, get, we need to work together and not allow anything...
We need to work together and not allow anything until we have a collaborative How Shall We Grow type thing, and we're against any other growth currently or any approvals whatsoever in that area until, and any growth by Seminole County, too, until that happens.
You know, Brian, I think, you know, your tone of your letter could be whatever it is, but I think what you've written here, you know, to get back to Councilman Britton, you know, to hit on it, I mean, the county's letter clearly says they object to the incompatible and uncoordinated urbanization, that's the homes, crossing of the econ with the bridge, I mean, it's in there, just how much you want to go. I think what's more effective is the night they all hear this, because, you know, one doesn't know where these Commissioners are going to vote. I'll tell you what, if I'm sitting on the Orange County Commission, and this is before me, I don't see how they could vote for this and know the damage it's going to cause to so much. And like I said, if you drive it every day and you live there, you see it's a nightmare now. How does 4,000 extra homes help? So I think you're there, and I think one of our staff being at that meeting, talking about this into the record, it might give it a little more weight, but I don't know that you got to yell at them. I think the county and our letter hit it pretty hard. I mean, you want to keep the door open to work with them. You don't want to tell them, you know, they haven't even voted yet.
When's the hearing?
14th.
I think it's, you know, June 14th.
June 14th?
June 14th.
June 14th is the hearing, yes.
I'm not saying change the tone of the letter, but there needs the actions given to them that they need to do, not just reject, and they're going to go, noted. You know, they're going to write down.
What that guy said.
Yeah, exactly. And roll along. I think we need to offer, you know, first of all, they need to take care of what's going on now. There is a problem. I think that's key.
You know...
And they need to look at all of us. Again, they're doing it in a vacuum. They, they're sitting just themselves talking about the verses. Any collaboration with UCF, us, Seminole County, I mean, and just looking, they need to start looking bigger.
You know, I'm not sure, you know, at another body's hearing, but what, you want to get this point across? You know, get UCF, get their president to go down, get the chairman of the Seminole County Commission, get one of us to go down there and speak to them why they're all there, because letters, sometimes you get letters, they don't care. That gets them attention. But I'm okay with the letter. I think it hit it, you know? I mean, I think it's hit all the points, but I just don't know how effective it will be.
Actually, Dr. Kray and I were talking today. We do believe that there will be a member of the Seminole County Commission attending the meeting.
I'd be more than willing to go and read it into the record.
Good.
No problem. I mean, if anybody else wants to read, that's fine. Please, I don't want to sit there and read it. Or anybody else?
I just wonder if the mayor's seat should go do it.
Well, that's what I said. I don't mean that in any disrespect. I'd go there and sit there and support it.
I didn't want to volunteer that without somebody suggesting.
No, I would easily suggest that. I think we'd have a lot more authority if the mayor, and I have no problem going there with you, but having the mayor read it into the record.
Have you got the county chairman going to go down there and read it?
We're not sure. We just understand that a member of the County Commission will be going.
Can we coordinate that with Seminole County? And let's just make sure, before we send one of us to go, that one of them is going as well? I think that a collaborative effort with this, I don't have a problem doing it. I don't have a problem going in there and correcting the record on what was mentioned at their PZA, or whatever they call their other boards' meeting. I know that you have a letter written to correct that to their staff, which is great. I just, we need this to be a coordinated effort as opposed to us both working in separate vacuums.
Correct. No, that's not a problem.
With Seminole County. I think that's important. The other thing is that usually if you let the other governing body know that the elected officials are coming down to speak, they'll put all of us up at the beginning, generally, to allow us to get our thoughts into the record, so we can see if that type of a combination will be offered. Of course, unless they're just heck bent on approving it, and then we'll be at the end, but...
Can I make a suggestion?
Maybe... Well, what I was going to say, where I was going to go with all this is that, you know, we can tweak this letter, that's fine, but we come up with something, a script from us, that I deliver, over the next few weeks, then we have some time to do it. We can get this out now, or something similar to this. We come up with a script and, you know, basically, and we don't want it to be too long, because, you know, there's nothing worse than somebody sitting up there for five minutes. It can be short, succinct, couple of, three, four paragraphs, read into the record and hand it to them, in addition to what you already have in our support of Seminole County, and let us coordinate that with Seminole, so we're all not going in there doing the same thing.
And I would agree. That has much more effect, and I would agree, it would be better that the mayor delivers it, it would be better that the chairman of the Seminole County Commission delivers it, and, you know, there should be some conversation with UCF, too, and see where they are with this. This is going to affect them like crazy, too. It would be, that would, you know, if you read the county's letter closely, they talked about some projects that were on the Osceola border, where Orange County flipped out and didn't want their Parkway built, and they fought it, and Osceola County stepped back. And I think if you have the right people going up there, elected officials will take notice of elected officials, maybe a little more serious, but when you have your county chairman of your next county, your mayor of the city that you're going to about devastate, and maybe somebody from UCF may just have a chance to stop this, you know?
Or at least get some attention to it.
Yeah. And, you know, especially the one on the north, Sustony, I mean, that's the one that's, you know, from what I'm hearing, the other developer has been trying to work and do some transitional zoning, but you really don't want any of it, to be honest with you. So I think the letter and the follow-up with us, Dominic being there, that'd be great.
Well, it seems to be the consensus of council, so we're good with the letter? This particular letter is written currently, or?
I'd still like to...
What would you like to add, Councilman?
You know, looking at it, why don't we put some meat on the bone and add the three things that are specific to Oviedo, rather than the one sentence that says, kind of sums it all up?
Okay.
Let those Commissioners know where Lockwood Boulevard and Ollockwood Boulevard are. I bet you not a single one of them has been down it in 10 years. Let them know where Mitchell Hammock is. Yeah, we can talk about the impacts on the school, but I think giving them a spatial reading on where we are compared to where they're planning on building would have a good effect.
Mayor, Mr. Grude has some ideas.
Okay, great. Mr. Grude, help us out here, please.
These are just ideas now, okay? This is what I heard. In the first sentence where you say the City of Oviedo Council is in full support and agreement with, you could say, add each point of opposition set forth in the Seminole County Board of County Commissioners' letter. So that, one of you all said you wanted to identify with each point of opposition? So that does that. Now, if you go down into the next paragraph, the third line, where it says it starts with Lake Picket Study Area? Could read, "Lake Picket Study Area, strike, to be developed, and given the current negative impacts and future negative impacts, it does and will have on the capacity of the city's transportation network," because you said you wanted to talk about it now and later. So you could add that. Oh, and after, "enable the development of the Lake Picket Study Area." I forgot that, I'm sorry. So before Lake Picket Study Area, "will ultimately enable the development of the Lake Picket Study Area." Okay. Now, before your final paragraph, you could add, and it's in your agenda memo, where the three points are identified, "the city will be affected by both Sustony and the Grove projects in the following ways," and put those three bullets.
Yes, specifically. Go from general to specifics, and add the three items.
And then, at the end of the sentence, which is your last paragraph, you could say, "we ask you to deny approval of any land use proposal which results in the aforementioned adverse impacts to the city."
Yeah.
And that would seem to do everything you guys mentioned, you all mentioned.
Lonnie, you've written a few of these. Is everybody in agreement with the changes? Councilman Britton, does that hit your points?
That hits it.
Good. Is there anything else on this item?
Would it make sense, Lonnie, in there to let them know that the mayor is going to come down and address them on that night?
Here's my idea on that, and it's just my idea. I would recommend that a person of corresponding authority to the county attend, because I would recommend that you wouldn't want your mayor to attend if a, and I don't mean this negatively, if the chief planner was going to appear for the county. On the other hand, if the county chairman or a Commissioner is going to appear, then one of you all, because I don't think you all want to overstate your case there.
And that's what I was trying to say earlier. We don't want, you know, send me and they send somebody else, or they send somebody else and we send Dr. Grude.
Exactly. So I think you just, if you had a consensus that a corresponding city person will attend that way, but you don't need to tell them in advance, because you don't know how it's going to play out.
Okay. Well, we've been in conversations, we had lengthy discussions with the Orange County planning staff, and we've also been in conversations with Seminole County planning staff.
So what you're saying is if they send the chairman, then we should send the mayor? If they send a Commissioner, then we can send Councilman Schenk?
That would be my idea, but that's...
Well, he volunteered, so that's good. He can go, there's my nomination, the mayor and Councilman Schenk. They can go speak to it. But I think the message, can I just wrap up with this?
Can we get lunch while we're down there, too?
Probably. I think the message here tonight, for anybody who wants to misconstrue, I think I've heard five city council members say, we're against this. Did I not, council?
That's what we were trying to say three weeks ago, but it just...
It just got messed up, so there should be no doubt, and we have a plan, so that's good.
Good. All righty. Anything else from the council members? Mr. Grude, Mr. Cobb, you got it? And I saw Dr. Korea.
They've already, they're going over now to make the revisions.
Okay. And it'll be here for us all to sign.
That's our call.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Cobb, we're actually up to your report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a, well, first off, we plan on opening the new fire station in about 30 days, and so Chief White's going to be contacting each of you to schedule a ribbon cutting. So I just wanted to let you know about that, that we're down to the final days of construction on the fire station.
What day are we looking at for it?
I'm sorry?
What day are you looking at during the ribbon cut?
I don't think we have a date yet. As we get closer, Chief White will be contacting you to schedule.
And I'm sorry, was that May or June?
End of May, early June.
End of May, early June.
About 30 days.
June-ish.
We have a very busy month of May. I just wanted to call to your attention, this Saturday, we have Arbor Day here at City Hall at 9:00 a.m. Also, the farmer's market will be going on at the Lawton House from 8:00 to 1:00. Next Saturday, May 14th, Bacon Bourbon and Blues Celebration at Center Lake Park from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. It's also the one-year anniversary of Center Lake Park, so it's a special celebration. Thursday, May the 26th, we have Food Truck Thursday at Center Lake Park from 5:00 to 9:00.
What is it called?
I'm sorry?
Food Truck.
Food Truck Thursday. Friday, May 27th, is the first night of barbecue blowout from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Oviedo Mall. There'll also be the concert that night. And then on Saturday, May 28th, barbecue blowout continues again, beginning at 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., which they have the actual competitions.
And we have the Oviedo 5K, I think.
We also, the inaugural Oviedo Memorial 5K and Kids Fun Run at Center Lake Park. The 5K will be at 7:30, and the fun run will begin at 8:45, and I also understand there's a medal thing at 9 o'clock or so, 9:30. And then on Monday, May 30th, is our Memorial Day Ceremony at the Veterans Tribute at Center Lake Park, and it'll begin at 9:00 a.m., which the chief mentioned earlier. So we have a busy month of May ahead of us, with lots of events going on. I just wanted to call, since the beginning of the month, wanted to call it to your attention, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Grude?
Just one thing. Some of you all have heard from time to time of an individual by the name of Joel Chandler and his brother, who have presented public records challenges throughout the state from time to time. And he has the absolute right to make public records requests, so that's not what I'm talking about. I just want to comment that he has engaged in a challenge, if you will, to many, many cities throughout the state right now, and one of which was Oviedo. And I just want to comment about how well the city clerk's office and the police chief's department worked together to address the public records requests that were levied at the city. They did a really good job working together.
Nice. So they came fishing for us?
Oh, yes.
Great job, Bobber. Anything else, Mr. Grude?
No, sir.
No, with that being said, Councilmember Britton, you're up.
Yeah.
You're not used to that at first.
We covered all the events that we're going to do at the Relay for Life. Drew's not here, but congratulations to Drew. And the bacon and blues, I'm really regretting, I'm going to be out of town that weekend, but some of the fellows that came over and played golf with me...
Extra bourbon draws.
What's that?
Extra bourbon draws.
Some of the fellows that came over and played golf with me Friday, one of them, Wally Schroder, bought four tickets right there on the spot. He thought it was such a good event. So when you see the Marin Island folks in that VIP booth, treat them nicely.
We will.
And I will not be here at the next meeting. I've got a conference that will take place all that week, so I'll be absent at the next meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
That's good. That's it.
Let's see, we're up to myself. I really have no report, because we did kind of touch on everything, and Relay for Life, once again, did look like it was a smashing success, so can't wait to see what kind of check we present a few weeks from now. Deputy Mayor, you're up.
I just echo the comments on the Relay for Life. Drew did a great job, and his staff. It's always one of the best golfing events around, and they really did a good job. I also, yesterday, was with Congressman Micah. He had stopped by. The orchestra, it was our finale, our 59 finale. He was, showed up, gave, generous with his time. He's come the last two years, spent the, mostly the event there. Had an event going on, Young Republican Event, at his house at 6:00 o'clock. He was literally running out the door, waiting. At about 5:20, he'd spent a lot of time watching the orchestras play. I really have to thank him for it. It was a great, great to have him there, and it shows how much he really cares about the arts and about the area.
Great. Councilmember Henkin?
I just got one thing. Well, I have both chiefs here. You know, just driving around the city a lot lately, and I just want to say thanks, as, you know, all of us would agree. There seems to be so much stuff going on in the city, you know, accidents and, you know, just things where you guys are picking up the pieces. You know, we read the reports every day, and you both make it look easy. Your staff makes it look easy. I see some stuff, like I saw one yesterday, chief, big accident. I mean, you guys just pick it up, and you comfort everybody, and Chief chucked out some of the stuff when you read that you would never think of going on in Oviedo, and you just, we're pretty blessed. So you guys and your team are just amazing, and I hear it all the time, and like I always say, if I'm in trouble, or I got a problem, there's no place I want to be, is here. So you tell all your boys and girls over there, they're doing one heck of a great job. They really are. So, and it's noticed by many, and I've seen it a lot lately, too. So thank you both, and thank for your awesome troops. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Drago? I left that alone.[1708.25][1708.25](laughing). I had something else in my mind, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Later on.
I'm going to congratulate the firefighter and the police officer for being the employee of the year. It is very comforting to know we have great departments and good officers and firefighters that, paramedics that keep us safe. So, congratulations to the chiefs for having great departments. I just have one question, Drew's not here tonight, but a while ago, we were talking about putting together criteria for signature events, and we were going to have a discussion about that. Do you know where we're at on that? You can say no if you don't know.
We've had discussions on it, but we haven't really put anything down on paper, is where we are. It's been more of a, we've been brainstorming, more than anything, and trying to come up with a definition that can, you know, meet the different things that council was looking for at that meeting, but we haven't really put anything down on paper yet.
I'd just like to see that loose end tied up. And that's all I have.
That's all I got? All righty, future meeting dates, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Britton?
One I forgot is Calno is Wednesday night, and it's, we're hosting it.
Is it here or over at the event center?
It's over here, and I think the agenda is to go through the Calno Charter to discuss adding some new members. And one last thing is, the course is getting better, it was in pretty good shape for the tournament, so the guys worked very hard to keep that, keep the course up to date and looking good for the tournament, so tell them a good job.
I think Wednesday night is also, we forgot the women's course.
It is, the women's is up, too, I guess, that's why I couldn't be there.
Right, philanthropic...
The philanthropic ceremony, yeah.
Right.
It's also my daughter's 21st birthday, but that'll, I think she wants to go out with her friends and not me.
Yeah. Let's see, how many of you have 21-year-old children who go out with you and not their friends on their 21st birthday? I didn't...
We're going out Friday.
Yeah, that's probably mine did. All righty, anything else? Anything else with the good of the order, before I announce future meeting dates? Hearing none, future meeting dates, we have a whole bunch of them. Monday, May 16th, regular session. Monday, May 23rd, 5:30 PM, we have the CRA budget work session, and then 6:00 PM, we have our budget work session. And that's just another update, I'm assuming? Robin?
At the beginning of the budget process for both.
Okay, so it'll be an update, kind of where we're at, and where we're going to sort of go. All righty. Monday, June 6th, governing, CRA governing board meeting at 6:00 PM. Monday, June 6th, 6:30, regular session. Monday, June 20th, 6:30, regular session. Monday, June 27th, that's the budget work session at 5:30, so I'm assuming that's going to be the real kickoff budget.
That'll be, yes, before you see the budget presented in July, since there's no other budget meeting in July.